Everybody ready? Okay, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Stokes County Board of Commissioners, where our joint meeting with the Board of Education for Thursday, January 23rd, 2023, 4:00 PM.
And we'll call the meeting to order for the Board of Education, a joint meeting with the county commissioners, February 23rd, 2023, and we call our meeting to order as well.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the invocation. If you'll please stand, I'll ask Justin to be with me, send the invocation.
Let's pray. Dear the Father, Lord, we come to you this afternoon. We sure thank you for Lord another day of life, Lord, for I pray that you just touch the meeting, and I pray that you'll just bless this county, bless our schools, Lord. I pray you'll just give us direction, you'd have us to go in and everything, I pray we'll put you first, give us clarity, and Lord, I pray that you'll just continue to move as these things in Jesus' name, amen.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in the pledge.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is approval of the county commissioners' agenda. So I'll ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve, second.
On favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, okay, this agenda's approved.
And we need approval for the meeting for the Board of Education, need approval of the agenda.
I'm moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great, it's good to have everybody here today. Our seating arrangement is set up to maximize the use of the audio, so that hopefully the folks that might be live streaming will be able to hear everybody that speaks. I think we're gonna start out, the next item on the agenda is a joint board discussion with the facilities planning, study and plan, planning document that was done, and I believe Dr. Rice, you're gonna maybe give some introductory comments, and then we will follow that with comments and questions from the school board members, and then the commissioners will also follow and join in, so.
Thank you Chairman Morris, appreciate that. Just to give a little backstory of what we were doing, and looking at our facilities, our numbers, all of that, how we're serving students, we wonder if what we're doing is the most efficient and best thing that we can do. So to do this, and do this with full transparency and full information, in 2122, we did a population study. We contracted with a group to come in and look at our, look at the data, they met with people here at the county office, they met with us, they looked at things to project long-term data for our attendance, and while they're projecting a little bit of a drop here in the very near future, it looks to pretty much stabilize all the way out to about 2050. Then, this year, we completed the facility studies, that was part of the county's study that you did with your buildings, and then we finished it up with our buildings. As you know, that presentation took place a couple of weeks ago, many of y'all were in attendance for that, and so that was our second stage. Our third stage that we've looked at is to start an efficiency study, and that's working with several different groups, the first group, a Masonburg group out of Wilmington, that's a lot of former school superintendents that have that type of background, to look at the programming we offer, how that's affected by having 5,500 students in 19 schools, and to see, also to look at our facilities, they've looked at our population study, and they will come up with some recommendations as part of that. We're also contracting with NC State, the ORAD lab there, to come in and do a similar type study. DPI is also, we've been talking with them about doing a study, they've had some personnel changes, I'm kind of unsure whether or not that will get done by this summer or not, and whether it will be done at all. We hope it does, because again, we want the most information we can to make an informed decision. The other part of all of this is then the planning. While our Board of Education understands that it's the Board of Education's responsibility to close a school or not, or to consolidate schools or not, in part of this planning process, if the recommendation is to build a new school somewhere, or to renovate a school where, somewhere, or retrofit one, all of that costs money. And so, we don't think it's wise to develop a plan that there's no funding for. So that's the kind of the purpose of the meeting today. Again, all of the documents that we have are on our webpage, y'all been at some presentations to see what we're talking about, especially the age of our facilities, but to start the conversation today to see possibly what funding may be available, and at what timeframe, to help us with our planning project along the way, to know whether we could do all at once, or phase things out, or kind of what that projection looks like. And that's the end of my form of stuff, and I'll open it up for conversation now.
Okay, thank you. Vaughn, you wanna have your, you wanna speak, or have your folks comment, or next?
Yeah, I will, thank you Chairman Morris, and I wanted to just say thank you to the commissioners, the Board of Commissioners, for having us over today, and it's really nice to have two boards that can sit down and communicate and talk, and try to work a problem like this out. I know, maybe in the years past, maybe it's not always been that way, but I think that these two boards have a good working relationship, we can all get together, we can sit down, we can talk, and we can really try to come up with a plan that's the best for our students, and that's really why we're here. And I've said in many meetings, open meetings in the past, I know that some of us have been in attendance of, is the issues and the problems that we're facing today are not necessarily issues or problems that we've created ourself. These are issues and problems that have been festering for a long time, and maybe what worked 30, 40, 50 years ago is not working today. And we do have several schools that are aged out, that are just no longer functional. We have a lot of schools that have safety issues, and even though this, these issues and these problems haven't been addressed in the past, I think our board now, that we have here now, is willing to address those issues. I think we're willing to make some of those hard decisions and do what we have to do in order to move Stokes County schools forward, and that's really what we want to do. And in order to do that, just like Dr. Rice said, you know, we're gonna have to have support from the commissioners. We can do some, we can do some of it on our own without costing a lot of money, but we also have some schools that need to be replaced. If we, like he said, if we retrofit a school, some of those things do cost money, and I think that's why we're here today, is to try to figure out what type of monies, or what type of budget that we can, that we're thinking about. And I know it's not, we're not gonna walk out of here with an answer today, but we want to get y'all to thinking about that, and trying to come up with a solution for an amount of monies that maybe we can, that we could have available to us, and that would help us finalize a plan that maybe we want to do on our end of it, too. And I've used the example plenty of times before, if I'm gonna go out and buy a house, then I'm gonna have to figure out how much money I can borrow before I go buy a house. If I go out and start looking at the million-dollar houses, and I go to the lender, well, the lender's probably gonna laugh at me, because, you know, I'm not gonna buy a million-dollar house. But, so we do have to figure out our budget, and then once we figure out a budget, then we can, we can maybe come to an agreeance of what consolidation may look like. But I don't think there's much debate about whether it's needed. It's not, it's not always been, you know, it's not, it's not gonna be a popular decision with all people throughout the county, but I think the alternative is, is gonna be higher and higher taxes, and I think that's gonna be the decision that's, and that more people are not gonna like, if we have to, if we have to keep funneling money into our schools in order to keep the same where we are right now. And I said at a meeting this past weekend, that somebody y'all were in attendance at, is I think the commissioners have been very gracious to the schools. Our funding per student is not low. We're funded very, you know, we all do a good job funding the schools, it's just that we're inefficient in the current model that we have, that it's taken so much money for us to operate our schools, and that's what we want to try to, try to solve, is get ourselves more efficient, get rid of some of our old schools that we have now, get into some better facilities, and we know we're not gonna rebuild all the old schools, that doesn't make sense either, but we may have to, we may have to rebuild one or two of them along the way in order to have room for all of our students, so. So I guess, again, thank y'all for having us, and sitting and listening to us, and hopefully being willing to come up with a, help us come up with a budget that we could work with, and help us move our schools forward for Stokes County. Thank you.
Okay, do you have other board members that want to?
Yeah, we can go around, if, Mr. Rogers, you wanna, you have comments?
Have you ever known me to be quiet?
No.
I mean, let's face it, we've all been here before with the exception of Mr. Campbell and Ms. Wood, welcome to the board. We're looking at the train coming down the tracks. What we're facing now is decisions that were made in Stokes County 70 years ago. When they built north and south, they anticipated population growth in two sectors. Right now, the population is not growing in one of those sectors, it's declining immensely. The other one is kind of holding fast. The king population is swelling, and potentially gonna swell. So we have to look at what we're given and spend it wisely, make the best use of it. It's not a decision we made, I mean, we built these high schools before I was even born, but those high schools are now at the 70, approaching 70 years old, with an 80-year lifespan. We can renovate and get 30 more years out of them maybe, but we've gotta make sure we've got the kids to deal with them. What scares me the most is waking up knowing that we're gonna have some elementary schools that are gonna have a K-1 combo class, a 2-3 combo class, a 4-5 combo class, because we're not serving those kids and doing them justice. That's what we have to figure out on our end. We have to decide as a group how we can afford to put those students and generate the next generation of Stokes County students and Stokes County citizens, because those kids are our future. Unfortunately, when Mr. Menon Hall and I served together, and Ms. Cox, we had 7,200 kids in the schools, and we were building some schools, it was great. We're 5,400-ish, and that was 10 years ago. And I think the Masonburg group, they shared some numbers, it may plateau a little bit, but we're still gonna see about 1.5% decline every year without, and they're gonna project it out to 2060. While we have a growing population of the senior citizen, as I get closer, and Mr. Roberts and I joke about that, like, oh whoa, we're gonna be part of that, it's gonna almost quadruple. So we're gonna have to really look at how we spend the county's money to get the most bang for it. We've gotta make the, what decisions we make will be the decisions that Stokes County lives with probably for the next 70 years, because every 70 years, it looks like, that's when Stokes realigns and determines what it is. So we, as a group, decided tonight, you just get one opinion, if I've got a doctor telling me one thing, and I've got a second one giving me the second opinion, if both of them match rate, if neither one of them are in line, then we'll go get a third if DPI can. But that's where we're at, we all, we've all had these discussions privately, now it's time to put it in the open and figure out how we're gonna go forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rogers. Mr. Duncan?
I'll echo what Vaughn says, I appreciate you letting us come and meet with you today. I'm new to the process of a joint meeting, but I think this is helpful, as I ran on the platform of making sure that no matter where you're at in the county, you got access to quality education, and that's the whole intended goal of this. Just as Mr. Rogers said, you know, the population shift is definitely something that, not just the school system is facing, but I think the county's facing, you know, and so, in talking with the Masonburg group, you know, I was, there were some things that we, you know, they got us individually to kind of give us, or give them our opinions, our suggestions, what we see about the county. One thing that I've seen about the county, living here my whole life, is that every area of the county is, has got its own personality, you know, they've got their own needs, and so, as part of this joint venture that we have with you guys, is making sure that those needs are met, but at the same time, making sure that we use what money we have, because unlike the federal government, we can't make our own, and so, we see that that's what we're running into. If you look at some of the data, and I know y'all have had an opportunity to look through that, the things that a lot of times we can't see, the public can't see, is the, you know, the bones of the buildings, you know, the heating and air, the plumbing, those things that, you know, it may look great, the paint is in decent shape, or the exterior is in fair condition, but it's the behind-the-scenes that makes those buildings function, is what we're looking at when we think about lifespan, and you all know about, even with the county buildings, and over time, I mean, it's gotta be, unfortunately, we're the board that's gonna have to help figure this out, you know, and so, as has been mentioned, it's not popular, but at the end of the day, we want to do what's right for all students in the county, and so I think we can agree on that. So again, I appreciate us sitting down and having this dialogue, and seeing where we can, we can get some funding to move our schools forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Duncan. Ms. Knight?
Yes, like everyone said, we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you all and have an open conversation. Yes, you know, we're kind of like the cleanup crew, you know, in a sense of, you know, ongoing issues, and seeing the older deteriorating buildings, and, you know, knowing that, you know, just less and less students, unfortunately. You know, COVID did really, you know, hurt our overall attendance, I think parents in a pinch, you know, had to look for other options and do what, you know, worked for them. So definitely being wise with our dollars, offering students best opportunities for great careers, and in the same sense, like I've heard everyone say, you know, equal opportunity to education is very important, you know, we just can't spread everybody so thin, you know what I mean? We can't make ride times excessive and drive times excessive, you know, so I do want to see like an equal, you know, opportunity around the county, and just, you know, maybe less through this, maybe less sharing, like what art and PE and all those extra classes right now, that, you know, they have to bounce around to 2 and 3 schools, right? And then all the combo classes, I know it's hard at times on kids, and, you know, tough for teachers, they're resilient and do a great job, but, you know, there's ways we can, like we said, like Mike said, educate our students a little, a little better, so, I mean, I look forward to the open conversation, and again, thank y'all for having us.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Knight. Mr. Bryant?
Yeah, I'd like to echo everybody, just like.
They don't work right now, they talked toward that other one, this one.
We have to go sit and.
We're fine, we can hear you, if you just talk down.
I love little Rogers right around here a little bit. Yeah, I'd just like to say thank y'all for meeting with us and having this dialogue with us, it's something that we really need to have. You know, everybody's pretty much said everything by the time it got to me, but two or three things that I want to harp on is combo classes. What we need to do is what's best for the kids, more so than any other thing, and these combo classes kill our kids' education. You take a kid that goes in, say kindergarten, first grade combo, by the end of the year, this kid's got half a kindergarten and half a first-grade education. Well, he goes to second, the first grade next year, he gets that same half. So at the end of the first grade, this kid's got half of a first grade and half of a second grade, kindergarten. Now he goes to second grade, he's way behind. That kid never gets caught up, and that's only hurting the kids. These combo classes hurt our kids. It causes us to have a school that's, say, underperforming. It's nothing to do with the teachers, the administration, nothing else, just because there's not enough kids in that class, that school, to have the classes that they need. So we're only hurting the kids if we don't do something. The other thing is, you look at the shape of our buildings, some of them. I've got a customer said, I graduated from that high school in 1950, she's 97 years old, and now it's elementary school. So you know that school's about shot, the life of it's about gone, and if we don't do something now, what are we gonna do five years from now when that building's gone? It's too late then. I work in, I worked in Forsyth County, I switched jobs, we do a lot of work in Guilford County schools now, so I've been in both these big-money school systems. They're just like Stokes, they've got some buildings that need some help. What is Guilford County, what, a $2 billion bond? I mean, come on, they let their schools get that bad? Problem is, the money that the schools get, they have to be reactive instead of proactive. So they have, more or less, they don't have enough money to fix anything before it breaks, they have to wait for it to break, because everything breaking costs so much money, and they know that if they don't save that money for something to break, they're not gonna have the money to fix it with. You guys have done a fantastic job. When I go into Stokes County schools, what I see our maintenance department's done, what they've had, nothing short of miracles, but y'all have gave us what we needed, when we needed, and I want to thank you for that. What a guy.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Okay, Chairman Morris? Thank you, Chairman Robinson. I think I'll make a few comments next, having been involved with this for a while myself, it might facilitate the discussion between the two boards, some, maybe comments and some questions, too. Let me start with a question. Given the, given the folks, it's your third-party folks, and experts, and consultants, and that combination of people you've talked about, is it, is it the school board's plan to bring us a comprehensive plan that's either consolidation, or whatever, whatever it ends up being, but a comprehensive plan that we can actually, that will be priced when we get it, about what it'll actually cost for different options and so forth? That'll also, it'll be a plan that takes a long view of things as much as we can into the future to prevent recurrence of problems like we're trying to deal with now? I mean, is that kind of, is that kind of what we should expect at some point in time?
Yes, sir, I mean, that is the plan, to come up with possibly a multi-stage projection of things to happen over the next 10 years or so possibly to do this, but again, we don't want to waste their time creating a plan that may cost $100 million if there's $10 million on the table. If that's the case, and again, we don't expect a final number today by any stretch, but we want to be able to kind of ballpark it with them and say, while these are our issues, we're also looking for a $75 million solution or less. And so they can plan to kind of plan to match what may be in store for us. But yes, the goal is to come back with a full-laid-out plan, but also one that's fundable, and so not a, it's easy to plan if you don't have a budget, but you have to restrict that sometimes when you have a budget. So that's why, the purpose of this is to try to get an idea so that they, these outside people can plan effectively.
Okay, well, I don't think there's any way we can give you any kind of a specific number.
And we don't expect a specific number today, but kind of a ballpark of what may, I mean, if it's 50 million in the next three years, or 100 million over the course of 10, or, you know, whatever it is, you know, that kind of helps us to decide what kind of stages in planning that we need to do.
Okay, well, the problem is, we have, I mean, we have the authority to borrow a ton of money that, if we wanted to, I mean, we're just at a very small percentage of what we could legally borrow, but if we went and borrowed what we were allowed to borrow, we'd be idiots, because the risk would just be out of sight to do that. I'm not even sure why the laws allow us to borrow as much as they do. But we did, we did a similar project to this before, with, I think it was when I came back the second time as county manager, I think that's when it was kind of kicking off, where we'd put a 4-cent tax increase in and set a special fund up, and if I remember, the total amount was 40-something million to do those projects, the new, I don't remember exactly the number, but it was Poplar Springs, the renovations, Lawsonville, and then Wallon Cove, and so, I mean, we've done something, we've done a version of this before, where we, and when I came back, they were, I think they were talking about doing this without raising taxes, which was just insane, there's no way you could have done that. So we came up with this 4-cent fund, promised the public that we would use it specifically for this purpose, and if we changed it, that we would advertise it and make sure they were aware of it. And I don't, you can ask the other commissioners, Ernest and the guys that were there at the time, I don't think we ever received, I never received a single complaint about that 4-cent tax increase, because I think people realized that we needed to do it, and that they, and we promised that we would not spend it on other things, and so, my gut feel is, that may be a way we, one of the ways we could look at it, providing funding in the future, to do that again, because if it worked well then, I don't know why it wouldn't work well again, as long as you have the public's buy-in to the fact that we need to do that, you know, we need to make these changes, and we need to provide the funding to do it. But I think, so we definitely, we've got one role, you guys have the other role, you guys have the role of figuring out this, whether this is a consolidation, or some consolidation with other parts to it, or building new schools and all that. I really think that's your job, to figure that out and recommend something to us, and then, and then we will work with you to fund it through lottery, or, I mean, there's a lottery thing that they're building new schools, right, that you guys are applying for. I think we gotta look at all those sources and try to, try to figure out how we approach that. I think another piece of this is to have a clear analysis, and hopefully the same folks that are doing the work for you now, or maybe, maybe somebody else if it's appropriate, have a clear analysis of why the status quo will not work, why we can't continue down the path we're on with this number of students and this number of schools that are in this condition or whatever. I think that'll be a very clear story, and easy for people to understand, that we have to do something collectively, and not just keep kicking the can and expecting, expecting different results with the same behavior kind of type of thing, so. So that ought to be part of, I guess, the master plan, the fact that the status quo has to be adjusted and fixed somehow or the other. The, when we borrow money, we've got a fairly convoluted process to go through with the local government commission and everything, a lot of lead times and so forth involved, so I think another thing we need to understand is, when are we actually gonna go try to borrow some funds? And when, you know, when, when would we need to get in that cycle of getting advice from our financial advisors, and getting on the LGC schedule and doing all that kind of thing? I don't think it would be, you could do that this year, but it'd be a challenge if you did, you'd have to, and going through the LGC is not an easy process, it has to be very well-defined, and check the, dot the i's and cross the t's to get them to approve a loan, so. And we did that whole drill with this 4-cent tax thing, when we did the debt for the buildings there, so. The sooner we can start to get our arms around a plan, that we can then put some milestones out there, one of my other things I wrote down is, today, just to be thinking about us collectively putting together a schedule with the key milestones, whatever they happen to be, so that we can start, start the macro level of planning for meeting these lead times and so forth, and analyzing, we still have debt left from the projects we did with the 4-cent fund, so we gotta figure out how that's gonna blend in with adding new debt as part of our analysis on how much we could, we're willing to borrow and so forth. So, another thing, I guess, we have a lot of requirements here, too, we've been through, just through 20 hours of department head meetings with our folks, to understand what their requirements are, and so, we've got. to understand what their requirements are and, and, and so we've got some money, we've got to figure out where we're going to get to fix some of the things here in the county, too, because at the same time, we deal with you guys' issues. So that's kind of the function that we're trying to go through and analyze and, and I haven't got a ballpark number for you yet, so.
But that's, you know, that's, that's just my initial thoughts.
Are you saying that what we would need would need to be paid for out of the current four cent tax? Or what we could borrow would be paid for out of another four cent tax? And that's what we would be limited to, is whatever that payment, whatever that amount generated would need to cover the loan payments? Is that what you're proposing?
Sort of. I'm not, I'm not saying anything is for certain, but I'm just saying, yeah, not, not out of the current four cents, you'd have to add to that fund. That same fund would, that's exactly what it was designed for, was for this problem that we're talking about. It's, and so I think you, if you were going to take an increasing taxes approach, that'd be the logical thing to do, is just add more to the four cent fund. Whatever amount you needed to generate the number we come, that ballpark number that we come up with. And, and that's already in place. I mean, that'd be easy to do, basically.
So currently, just from my knowledge, what does the current four cent generate a year?
I don't have that, I don't have that off the top of my head, but the models.
Have you been on this? We were given, she might have included it on there. I know the model of it's set up.
We can get that number, definitely. But what it does, that, it's set up, that, that model is set up to pay the debt for all those projects. It also has some assumptions. It, it gets lottery money in, I think, or it used to, I think it still does. It also carries a fund balance for contingencies for, for instance, the, what's that crazy acronym? QZAB, QZABs, whatever. For instance, federal government was to, was to all of a sudden eliminate those. It's got enough fund balance. I think it's got enough fund balance to carry that. We may have to refinance if they did that. It's, it's got a fund balance for contingencies. And it, and we, it's very specific what it generates per year. We can get that number for you real quick.
But if I'm not mistaken, it also carries a 1.25% for Forsyth Tech outside of Stokes County Schools.
Forsyth Tech was one of the projects that it was included in.
It's in that four cent, so it's not, people are misled thinking Stokes County Schools gets all four cents. We only get 2.34% or 2.34 cents.
Yeah, it would, yeah, those projects were all advertised as that's what was being paid for, and we wouldn't be adding any other Forsyth Techs to it if we added, I would think if we add tax increase to that fund, then it would be for this purpose only. I don't, we don't have any requirement to do anything else like Forsyth Tech at the time.
And what's funding now also requires a general fund transfer. It used to be 1.1 million, and you all changed it a few years ago to like 893,000, I think, because you did that thing where you could skip a year, like every fifth year. It doesn't quite fully fund itself already to pay. It has to, you don't have that general fund transfer in it. The way the model's set up, it, it won't keep going.
Yeah, but we'll keep that general fund thing going.
Oh, of course you will. I've been saying to the public, you would need way more than that four cent fund.
Oh, yeah, you'd need, we'll need, probably need more than four cents to do the kind of, I mean, depending on the scope, I mean, these giant numbers that are being kicked around in the report and all that, that's a lot more than four cents. But what those act, numbers actually turn out to be would be, you know, we'd have to look at it from that standpoint. We'll get that number, and probably, you can probably calculate it while we're talking, can't you? The, what the four cent fund generate, generates per year, and the tax part of it, but anyway.
I have the paper that I had earlier, and I can get it figured out, what it generates.
With that, I'll shift over to our other board members and see what their thoughts are. Would you like to start, Commissioner Cox?
I can, I can. I have some notes here. And again, I'm glad to meet with y'all, glad to try to work together with y'all to, to figure out this problem. I think it's like several of y'all said, we didn't create it. It, you know, we're the beneficiary of, of years ago of planning and, and, and back then, they couldn't have even foreseen what it would look like today. I mean, when I was on the board, and Ricky knows, and Lynette, we did that ORED study, and we looked at those decline in population, and I don't think we believed it at the time because we were sitting pretty that we would be where the ORED study predicted we would be, and here we are, pretty much dead on what they said and with this decline in student, and they didn't even know about COVID when they, when they did that. But one thing, because there's a few of us sitting in this room that went through closing a school, myself, and Rick was on the, was the county manager, but, but Commissioner Mendenhall and Lynette and Ricky and some of us, that were all part of that. Were you still on here?
Oh, no, they kicked me off the island before it happened. I got white more, but they kicked me off.
That's true. But we all know, that is just not a fun thing to do. And I mean, it's the elephant in the room that none of us are really wanting to talk about, but it's, it's obviously something that's going to have to be, be talked about. We don't think we can afford to replace all of our aging schools. If we could, I'd be 100% behind it if we could, because I'd like to keep them all open. I think there is a value to a community school. I think it defines a community. But I also understand we live in the real world, and that's kind of pie in the sky. What I would like to see, and I think some of these studies may bear out that you're doing, is, is seeing if there's any definitive data about sending students to larger schools or consolidating schools and how that improves student achievement. And I think that's what these studies you're talking about is supposed to show. And, and that's kind of data is sort of hard to argue with if you have that, because it's like, I think Mike said about what's best for students and, and, you know, and sometimes what's best for students and what's best for communities go against each other sometimes in the real world, and that's unfortunate. And, but when I, when we were looking at closing Francisco, that's what we talked to a lot of people in the community about, and they had a hard time understanding that, that the Board of Education job and what they're charged with is what's best for students. You know, and sometimes it's in conflict with what's best for communities, and that's where the rub is, and that, that's what is really, really hard. I feel like that if you don't do something, I can tell you what'll happen eventually, is what happened at Nancy Reynolds, and that's getting a building condemned and the insurance company telling you that it won't insure that building anymore. And those kids are not, not to be put back in that building, and I think that's what we got to eventually, and we had to rebuild Nancy Reynolds. So that could happen. That's something that can eventually happen. I think that what you're talking about is a multi-phased approach. I think you've already mentioned that, and that's something that's, that's got to happen. I think we've got to, when you start laying this out to people, you've got to have, you know, eight-year plan, a 10-year plan, a 20-year plan even, just looking forward and, and just having this data. The data that, you know, we didn't have years ago, we didn't have a way to really predict some of the things we can predict now, and we got to use that, that to our, our advantage. One thing that I wonder is, you know, if, if school closings and consolidations, is it a consequence of the population decline, or could it be a cause of population decline in, in an area and, and have a negative effect on the population, which is an unintended consequence of closing a school? But I mean, it's a big, it's a big thing to look at, and I know y'all are taking it very serious. And as far as money, getting back to money, you know, we can't give you a number, but I think we could develop a, and maybe we just have to have this talk as a board about what's the threshold of what we're willing to say we would go out in debt for? And what's the, anything above that, are we going to look at a bond referendum? Can't take a bond referendum off the table, I don't think. It's, it's easier without the bond referendum, but there again, if a bond referendum passes, and I was part of a bond referendum committee before I was ever a school board member, we passed the bond building West Stokes and Pine Grove, and I think we did something at Southeastern, too, but, you know, we had to figure out how to pass that bond, and it passed. And, and when a bond passes, it just takes the monkey off the back of the commissioners, because we can say, well, you voted for a bond referendum which included a tax increase, so we got to do that for these schools. Or we can just bite the bullet and do the tax increase, because we, we can't do what needs to be done, I don't think, without a tax increase. That's the other elephant in the room, you know? And so, you know, it's some tough decisions, but I do believe this is a time with these two boards to realign, to reset, to reconfigure. You got to look at enrollment, bus routes, the things y'all know, the age of the buildings. At the time, was, is it worth saving or not? But can you afford to replace it if there's 150 kids in it? You know? And I, I'm just willing to support you in whatever y'all can come up with that y'all are, think is the best plan for the schools for the next 20 years. We can't keep doing what we've all, kicking the can down the road, like you said, keep doing what we're doing. I mean, it's time to, to put it all out on the table and just really make some wise decisions based on the best data we have. I'm glad to see y'all are doing even more studies, you know, and, and not just basing it on emotion or basing it off of what you think, you know, concrete data, and I feel like y'all are trying to gather that, so that's really all I got right now. I might have something else later.
Okay. I got a minute later.
You owe my time.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Commissioner, would you want to comment or question?
I can read my own writing.
Well, being the oldest one here, um, yes.
I don't know about that.
You want to pull my driver's license? First of all, I want to compliment y'all. I think you're going in the right direction with all these studies. I do want you to get together and put the, when, when is the other, you said you might, you had three, but you only got two for sure?
Yes. Masonburg Group should be done in the next couple of weeks, and then ORED will be here a little bit later this spring, and they'll hope to have a report to us right around the start of June.
I think we need to work smart together. I think y'all will come back. This, this will not be the last meeting on this. I think we need options for what you want. If you need, I have sources to get budget numbers on what you want to build, because I've been in construction for, I've done for 50 years. I've already talked to people who do schools that can give, give me budgets on stuff. Material prices are starting to come down now. I don't know how long that will last. We just need, we need to know what we're up against cost-wise, because it's like, it's like, it's like a kid, your kid's coming to you wanting allowance and, for something, and they won't tell you what they want. So I know what we're up against. I do, here's what, how I strongly feel. We don't need to be putting any more new tires on a car that has a blown engine. It is, it's time to, the funniest story I told somebody, somebody says, how do you feel about closing schools? I says, well, I, I was, I think the second class that went to North Stokes, I went to Lawsonville, and I says, well, me personally, when they tore the old gym down to remodel, I says, I was glad to see it go, because Mr. Lyons beat my butt about three times in that old school. I was glad to see it not there. The community thing is important, but I think, I think the kids' education is more important, and, and I think they're hurting now, no, no fault of teachers or what y'all doing. We talked to, gosh, along with us, we talked to Rockingham, we met with them once, and they asked how many schools they had, we had, and they couldn't believe it. They don't, they had wanted to know how we survived. And we're not surviving, that's the problem. I mean, this is not a problem, it's an opportunity, and we just need to work smart through it. That's all I got.
I'll be short. Nice to see everybody again. Here's my, here's my take. The Board of Commissioners has to do our part. My personal opinion, just being one vote, is that I think consolidation, if that's going to be the recommendation, and, and, you know, and I've, I don't know how many times I've read this, and all the other meetings I've been at, and, you know, you can talk to people in the community, I mean, we, we can't keep up all the number of the schools that we have. And then, you know, I listen to y'all, you know, we're having to combine classes, and I, I think we all know the answer to it, so we just need to get to the part to where I'd like to see schools start being consolidated this year. And start putting the least geographic areas of where the students are going to be going. And I'm willing to, I'm willing to, to raise taxes for the schools. And, and I'm not, the, the need is here. Now, you know, is it going to be popular? No. But it's also not going to be popular with the kids that aren't getting the right education and aren't going into the, you know, going into, into the, either the college or the workforce. And let's face it, it's not just, I mean, it's academics, but it's not even just the college, the four-year college model. We're still, you know, we could do much better with vocational stuff. So it, it affects every aspect of what we're doing. So what, what I would like to do is let's get proactive, and if I could suggest maybe a little subcommittee, like maybe two commissioners and two board members and somebody from the finance area, and let's sit down and let's get to work on it. I mean, but I, I don't want to put a limit on, on the number. I mean, I, I feel the other way. So you tell me if you need $50 million, and this is what you're going to get, for the $50 million, and this is, and this is, this is what our, our recommendation is that we do, then I'll fight to get you the money. I mean, I just, I don't know how, how else to say it. I mean, I'm, I mean, that's all I ever hear coming from here. Well, it's the way it always is in Stokes County. I'm just, you know, we, we can't do this, we can't do that, we can't do that. Well, yes, we can. Yes, we can. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Mendenhall.
Thank you, sir.
Tell a little bit about this, don't you?
Appreciate you saving me from life. I had a feeling you were going to do that.
Do have a six o'clock dance.
You don't have to worry, I got to be out here by six. Well, I'm sort of a little bit in a bind here, because I know what y'all are going through right now, because I've been there. And it's not easy. Y'all are going to have to make some tough decisions. I think Chairman Robertson alluded to that early in his statements. Closing a community school is not an easy chore, and if you believe it is, go through it, and you're going to find out it's not easy. I appreciate Commissioner Cox mentioning my name, because when we closed Francisco, the five board members got a vote, but superintendent didn't get a vote. So Dr. Wright, you won't get a vote on that. However, in Francisco, somehow they got the idea I got a vote. There were a whole lot of signs in Francisco on election year back there. And so I feel for y'all, I do, because I know what it is. People that I'd known all my lives, all my life, coming into my office, superintendent from Francisc- from Francisco, asking me to talk to board members, well, it was the board members, they had to make the final decision. So, you can come from temple and you can say, y'all go, but if you don't think it's not going to be resistance, nothing against you all. Commission, nothing against you all.
I understand.
Okay? Just, I'm going to give my point of view now.
Oh, I know, I got you. Either you lead or you don't. That's all.
I'm telling you this. Have you ever gone through a closing of a school?
Nope.
I didn't think so.
Nope.
So...
But I've never been involved in closing of the school before either. But I know what's not working now. So, is what is working now, if it's working now, keep it. You don't need to come to us then. The school board members don't need to come to us, keep it.
Well, I still got the chair.
You're the one that brought me into it.
Bringing you out of it.
Well, that's all I need to hear. Keep talking.
Real simple. You've got eight schools right now that are not at halfway capacity. Is that correct, Dr. Rice?
Yes, sir. Sounds about right.
Eight schools that are not halfway at capacity. Early school, I think, as I read through, was Sandy Ridge was built in 1950. And Pine Hall was built in 54. As I read through the dates, and of course, South and North was built in 64. And, you know, when I was in as superintendent till 1999, I think seven schools either had additions or new schools. Los Angeles had a new addition. Southeastern had a new addition. We built a new school at Poplar Springs. 2009, Nancy Reynolds got a new school, Early College. And in 99, West Stokes and Piney Groveville. That's from where we're at now, back to 1999. I don't need anyone to sit in this room telling me I don't appreciate education and I don't love the kids and I don't want to see them successful. In fact, I think the two board members will tell you that my motto was students first. And I pushed that hard. And I will always push that. At the same time, you've got to look at the entire county. I don't know if the board got a packet with our debt structure right now, but if they didn't get one, we need to get them one. Because we have things such as a jail payments, courthouse, I believe $6 million coming up this year. Many things are coming to us. I can, we can't give them an open hand and open legs and say, just tell us what you need, we'll give you everything you want. Can't do that. And it's going to take consolidations. Hey, let's face it, when you're getting down around 100 students, you get under 100, state takes away your principal's pay. And I noticed as I looked through, Pine Hall, I think, was the lowest. And I went up through the number of students in each school. I tell you, there's some schools in there that had capacities of 400 and some and it didn't have 200. I want to do everything I can to help the Stokes County school system. I didn't put in 36 years in the school system not to be an advocate for the schools. We need, as was brought up by one of our other commissioners, I think we need some options. I know y'all are saying you need to know how much money we can give you before you can come up with options. However, you're not going, I don't think, close down to one high school. You know, Davie County did that about six years ago. Cost them $56 million. There's one high school in Davie County. And that was what they, that's what they got, $56 million. And it was on a bond referendum. And the final tally was 51% for it, 49% against it. And it passed. So, I'm saying there's many options that we can look at. And I'm not saying that we don't need the help because we do. But I certainly know, I come on board in 2016, and the amount of money that the school system got has increased every year. Dr. Rice, am I right?
Yes, sir.
So, we have supported the school system. Since 2016, we have supported it deeply. And I want to continue to support it. I want to continue to support the school system. But we've got, y'all've got y'all's work cut out for you to see how you want to pull everything together for the students in Stokes County. Because it's like Mr. Roger said, when I was superintendent, we had between 7,000 and 8,000 students. And now, we're about 5,500?
54, 55, I don't know what today is.
Okay. So, I'm just saying, I love students. I stayed in the system 36 years for the students. And I'm going to support this Board of Education all I think I can possibly do with my vote when it comes time in the end. I love the kids, but there comes a time. When you see a school was built in 1950, and I was principal of that school for three and a half years, Sandy Ridge Elementary School. And I go back up there and I see those people today, several of the people that worked for me have passed away. When I go to the funeral home at Colonial and see people that I was principal for, it's hard. But I can say this, that 1950 to 1923, best I can figure, that's about, what is that, 73 years? That's a long time. And I was principal at Nancy Reynolds Elementary School for two years and it was condemned two years after I was moved to North Stokes High School as principal. Condemned because it was not safe for the kids anymore. If that building had caught fire, I'm telling everybody in this room, we'd have been lucky to get out half of our kids there because that wood on that floor was like timber. It would have went up in flames. And that's why the state finally came in and said, hey, you got to shut it down.
They said, one snowfall, like a heavy snow would collapse the roof.
It had several reasons. You know, when you build, when you have a school that old, there were many reasons they said, hey, shut it down. So, I'm on, I want to help the school system as much as I can. And if anybody in this room can say, I haven't voted for an increase every year, go back and look at the vote. Look at the vote. I have voted to increase current and capital every year. And I did that because I love the school, I love the kids, and I'll do anything I can to help out. And, but I think we're going to have to really take some serious looks at options presented and what we can do on our end to help. Mr. Chairman, give my time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just a couple of thoughts generated out of that discussion. First of all, we probably should, I'd like to hear you, before you guys leave today, your thoughts on a bond referendum that Commissioner Cox mentioned and whether that would be something we should look at. Also, and I think Ronnie alluded to it, would your, would your consult, your group of consultants and studies and so forth be looking at multiple, multiple options for, or multiple recommendations for ways you could attack this problem?
Yes, sir.
And say, for instance, could we, could we say, okay, give us a $50 million, give us a $70 million option and kind of attack it that way versus just trying to do one plan and figure out how much it's going, how much we can borrow and all that?
Yeah, so they can come up with several different scenarios and throw a price to it. Or again, if you said, you know, what's a $100 million plan or a $50 million plan, they could try to match that plan to around that ballpark. Again, we didn't want to come up with, again, a $50 million plan if you said, well, there was $100 on the table. You could have got all, more schools up to, you know, standards that way. Or we didn't want to come up with a $300 million plan if there was a $50 million, $50 million limit. So, before the final plans got placed, they kind of wanted to have a ballpark idea, but yes, there will be some different scenarios with different price tags to it.
Okay. We just don't have a, the only, I don't know what happened before I got here in 2004, but the only thing I've dealt with like this is that four cent thing where we did a group of projects. And this is like a bigger group of projects, it sounds to me like, and another four cent and five, six, seven cent or whatever it is, or some other funding option. And I don't know how to pull a rough order magnitude just out of the air exactly, even though I'd like to, but I just don't really know how to do that exactly. I think we could, we'd have a little better idea after we get our budget proposal within the county and see what, we just had a meeting, we've had a meetings where they were talking about so many added positions. I said, you got to go do, redo the org chart so I can see what you're talking about. I mean, it's, we've got a lot of stuff to pare down and look at from the county perspective that, you know, directly impacts what we can do otherwise, so. Back to you for your thoughts and your board members' comments.
Yeah, I mean, I think definitely some, some good comments here today, and I think we all are really on the same page. I think it's just we have to figure out the details. And I actually talked to Dr. Rice about that this week. You know, we've got to get, we've got to put plan to paper and actually come and put down the plan on the paper and come up. And I'm thinking the Masonburg Group will help us with that when they come and do their presentation. And I think we're going to have a special meeting called for that presentation. And I think maybe the two boards are working together to try to figure out a day that we can have that meeting and y'all not meeting here because I think you'll probably want to come and attend that. I know in our facility study, they did, they threw out a number of about $90 million to, to, of work that needed to be done to the schools. And that really wasn't all the work. There was probably, you know, they could probably come up with another $90 million on top of that that they didn't really include in that facility study. And, and, and we're not proposing that we go in and spend 10 or 15 million on a, you know, on a King Elementary School that, that would not make any sense. And we even asked the guys with the facility study, you know, would you spend $10 million on a King Elementary? And they said, no way. You know, no way would we do that. And it doesn't make sense. And it's kind of like Commissioner Wood said, we're not going to put new tires on a vehicle with a blown engine. And I think that's exactly, is a great analogy and that's exactly what we'd be doing. So, I think we can come up with a plan and, we've, we've kicked plans around. I could, you know, I've probably thought of 50 different plans. And every time I think of one, Commissioner, I mean, remember Brian over here, he'll, he'll, he's always got a response for me, why, why it won't work? So, so we've, you know, we've thought of a bunch of plans and, but it's just, we've got to settle in on the best, the best plan. And I think that's what the Masonburg Group is going to really help us with. They were in, they were in here last Thursday and we all met individually with them for about an hour. And I'm telling you, I was very impressed with them. Those two guys were very sharp. They do this a lot. It's their job. And I think when they come back with a plan or when they come back with some, some suggestions for us on what we can do, then I think it's going to really help us. So...
Can I ask you a quick question?
Absolutely.
Do they, does that group look at other counties or other school districts or whatever to try to see if somebody's already done this before? I mean, is that, is that how they, part of their analysis?
It's my understanding, Dr. Rice might can elaborate better than I can, but it's my understanding that this is what their company does, is efficiency studies all across the state and maybe even more than North Carolina. But they go into school districts all over the state and do exactly what they're doing for us. So, this is not the first time that they've done it. And...
So, they should have some success stories from somewhere else.
Oh, yes. I think so. I think so. And Dr. Rice, do you know any more about their history?
Well, again, they both started off as superintendents in multiple districts that went through consolidation, that went through building new buildings. So, they had that. And then, once they got out of being the superintendent, in the superintendency, that's when they formed their organization and started working with other districts around. And yes, they've worked with multiple districts to put together plans, some that were chosen to be implemented, some that were chosen not to be. But they have a lot of experience going through and making successful plans for districts that have worked well for them.
They've, they've come into, they've come into the county, they've visited every school. They've been to every school. They've talked to principals, they've talked to teachers, they've talked to students. They met with each, each board member individually. They've met with Dr. Rice and Dr. Jones and, and the maintenance guys over there, Ricky and Richie, they've met with those guys and they've taken them around.
Transportation.
Yeah, they met with Ms. Moore, I think, and they got numbers. And they've, they have been very thorough in their assessment of Stokes County schools. They know it very well. And the day we went in and met with them, they had a big map laying down and they, and they knew the county well. So, I'm really excited about what they're going to bring back to us. And I think the recommendations that they have may not just be consolidation. They may see things that we can do in food service or maintenance or transportation or whatever it is that, that we can be more efficient at and save money and help us in the long run. Consolidation maybe is probably going to be a big part of it. But, but they've visited the schools, they know what kind of condition those schools are in. They did, as Mr. Roger said, they did their own population study. They didn't just...
They projected that out to 2060.
Yeah. So, they didn't just take our numbers, all of our numbers and take them as gospel. They verified, they were, they were very impressive. So, it's just going to confirm what we kind of already know. But the thing I really like about it too is it's, those guys are out of Wilmington. They're coming in, they're looking at it very objectively. And where, where sometimes we may want to look at it, you know, we have more emotions involved in it, right? Well, that's, you know, that's where I went to school. I don't really want to do anything with my old school or my mom and daddy went there or my grandpa went there or whatever. They don't have all those ties. They're going to come in and look at it and look at the numbers and try to make good decisions based on what's best for our county and for our students. And I think that's, that's really what I'm excited about and appreciative of and really looking forward to what they're going to bring back to the table for us.
Do they have any, do they give you any advice on how to get the public to buy into these kind of projects and consolidations?
They, they will.
Dr. Rice, you want to touch that one because there is a component of the contract.
Yes, part of that, they will, they'll contract with a PR firm to help us with the plan moving forward, to help talk to it, hold town halls, community meetings, and to get community buy-in as well. To get community input on the front end and community buy-in on the back end. Again, they're looking at multiple options and so how all of that works together, they will work with the PR firm with us as well. will work with the PR firm with us as well.
I just have one other thing, and then I'll see who else wants to talk. I mentioned a milestone chart at the beginning, are you guys, can we do some kind of a path forward from today's meeting? Some kind of, uh, milestones or something about how, to give, give us at least a, get an idea of when we're gonna need this, look at borrowing money, for example.
Timeline, is that what?
Yeah, a timeline, yeah, with, with key milestones, and maybe we jointly develop that or something.
Real, real quickly, again, in the next.
As you have it already.
In the next month, we will get our report from the Masonboro Group, in June, we will get our, our report from O R A D, I mean, yeah, O R A D, and then in June, still working with DPI, whether or not that'll happen or not, but then at that point, we will have all of our studies complete, and then, and we will have their recommendations, and then we will look to get, to, to put together a plan and then present it to y'all. Again, I can't give an exact timeline because I don't know if they will all agree in five minutes, uh, after the last recommendation, or if it will, will take a little bit, I don't know that, but we're looking at early summer of having all of our studies complete and start the decision-making process of what kind of approved plan we would bring to you.
Well, between now and then, we both have big budgets to get through by 30th of June. So it sounds to me like maybe we just, this becomes a big project after the 30th of June, and we'll have the information maybe we need to move forward then.
Yeah, and there may be, uh, um, there may be some components of this plan, uh, that we can go forward with without really, uh, without, without it really costing us a lot of money, uh, that we go ahead and, and start saving ourselves some money, um, um, right off the bat, right, initially, and, uh, so we may, you know, as a board, we, once we start getting this Masonboro Group, uh, study back in, depends on what they're saying, uh, if, if there are some options there that we can take, uh, that we can implement, uh, without costing us a lot of money, without retrofitting the school, or without building a new school, uh, that is just pure consolidation, we may do that sooner than later.
So you mean, so what you're saying is you'll factor it into your capital request on the, on this budget that's coming up?
Yeah.
If it makes sense.
Um, and there may be some things that we can do that don't cost us really any money to implement.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, and if that's the case, then all that's gonna do is it's gonna save us some money going forward into our next budget cycle. Now, whether the, you know, whether the board as a whole will come together and agree on that or not, we'll see.
We'll see, yeah.
But, uh, but there, I think there will be some options, once we get this first study back from Masonboro, that, uh, there may be some options there that we can, uh, make some, uh, make some changes, uh, that are not costly to us, it doesn't cost money to implement, and, uh, and go ahead and start, uh, trying to become a little bit more efficient as we, uh, uh, even, even this coming school year.
Probably, it probably useful if you point those things out when, in your budget submission too, those things that might fit that category.
Yeah.
Say, here's something, here's one of these things that you just described that we're doing.
When's the budget due?
In your capital. 14th of, 15th of May, right?
15th is the school board.
Yeah.
If we're due by May 15th, and our, our report won't be back till sometime in March, the Masonboro Group and the other ones after budget, so, then on, how the board votes, we may or may not have those.
May, may have some.
Efficiencies, may still be a play at that point.
A lot of it's gonna depend on what that first report says.
Yeah.
It may be so, uh, overwhelming with evidence in black and white that, um, that we can look at it and we know, uh, what we need to do, and if that's the case, then we may decide, you know, let's go ahead and move forward with parts of it in order to, uh, in order to start becoming more efficient. Um, longer we go on with 19 schools, the, the less efficient we are, and, um, so at some point, just like we've talked about, at some point, that's why we're here, right? That's why we're all here sitting, talking about it today, at some point, um, you know, we've got to make those decisions and we've got to move forward with it, and, um, it may not, uh, like everybody knows, everybody said, it may not be, uh, the most popular decision, uh, throughout the county, but you know, there's gonna be a lot of people, I think, in the county that are gonna be appreciative of what we're doing because it will save them money in the long run. It's, uh, it's, it's gonna avoid us from having to keep raising taxes or keep spending more and more money on the schools and open, and keeping open all the schools and, and and not providing the best education that we can provide. So there are a lot of people that would be very appreciative of that too, it can go both ways.
Okay, I guess at this point, do any of the board members, either Board or Dr. Rice or Shannon, do any of you guys have any additional comments or questions you'd like to raise based on our discussion that we've had?
Um, you have anything else? I was gonna say, uh, along the lines of what Mr. Robertson was saying, uh, as far as, uh, cost and things, um, I mean, I think a portion, or maybe Mr. Morris mentioned it earlier, is like, what, what do we get, or what do we save, but, um, you know, I'm sure Ms. Um, Moore could talk about, you know, when you, when a school has to be consolidated or closed, what savings, you know, is generated, uh, from that, right? I mean, I think that's a, a part of it, and then, um, a few notes that I had jotted down as far as, um, you know, a concern I've mentioned, um, before is just like a little more communication now, uh, as far as whether it be social media from the school system or whatnot, just so, you know, nobody needs to be blindsided, parents don't need to be surprised, you know, I'm already getting phone calls about rumors and whatnot, um, and then, um, I don't, you know, think that necessarily rushing into some things is, uh, you know, the way to go to save money, I think the communication piece is key, um, you know, because you don't want the rumors to fly around, you want the public to be involved in, you know, um, you know, we can't continue as is, but, you know, this might be a good option. So involving, uh, more communication now to say, you know, the timeline, everybody's mentioning the timeline, what is that timeline, and putting that out there, um, and then, um, you know, the O R A D study's been mentioned, um, previously, and, um, I think a key component, we've all had to review that O R A D study, um, maybe not Justin, but, um, I think we saw that at some point, uh, in the past couple of years, as far as a big component, uh, of that was, you know, economic development, and, um, you know, I think this board is trying to move forward with, uh, more economic development in the county, but, um, you know, that's a huge part of all of this, if we're not bringing in businesses and, uh, generating more tourism and things, then, um, you know, we're not gonna see a population growth potentially, right? You know, are we okay staying stagnant, are you guys okay with that, or, um, do you want to see the county grow, develop, flourish, um, make it somewhere more, um, appealing to young families, right? Um, so, you know, something to consider there long-term is that economic development's gotta be, um, you know, at the forefront, um, for our county, but, um, another concern, you know, that I mentioned, of, of course, I don't want Everett, Olivia, or Alex on an extremely long bus ride, they ride, ride the bus now, you know, we don't want to throw out consolidation, uh, for any students and not throw additional, you know, buses in the mix and, um, that sort of thing, um, big sudden changes without extensive communication, and I don't mean like you talk about it in June and it happens in August, to me, that's not enough, uh, communication, um, just that, yep, that's key, and then, like Ms. Cox mentioned, the unintended consequences, um, you know, that's been, I think I discussed that with, uh, the, the, um, Masonboro Group to say, you know, and I can almost remember, you know, God rest her soul, what Becky said a handful of years ago, and that is that, um, you know, Northern Stokes County will look to other options, they're not gonna bust their kids three hours, you know, they'll go across the line to the closest Christian school, they'll go to the closest charter school, uh, they'll homeschool, you know, that's already, um, very popular, so there will be unintended consequences, so just handling it, um, very professional with communication on the front side. I think that's all.
Mr. Rogers?
One thing we've got to keep in mind, this county, and I'm not from here, I chose to be here because I love the people, like Mr. Chandler, love the people, the people love their communities. So many times we hear, my mother graduated from here, I want my great grandchildren to graduate from here. We've become in love, we've become in love with the buildings, our focus is to be in love with the kids that are in it. As we look at potentially consolidating, once that building is idled, it is no longer in our control, it is in yours. Uh, as we saw with the last time we idled a school, it became some, another, I strongly encourage the commissioners to consider potentially using part of those facilities as community hubs, so that community maintains its focus, its tight-knit ability to bond, and that structure is something they, they are in love with, let them keep it and use it for multiple uses. That's all I've got to say.
Okay, anybody else?
I want to back up what Mike just said, because you look at, say Sandy Ridge, Shore School was built back 50, that gym was built later, and the community uses that gym a lot, they use the baseball field, Lostville, the community's put up lights, they put new bleachers in, they need to be able to use those facilities, I mean, they put an investment in, we need to figure out a way if we have to do some kind of consolidation with some of these schools to make sure the community gets to keep using.
You'd have to have a model that funds it.
But you want to talk about, you know, a negative impact, you know, you talk about Little League and, you know, all that, and, and not, uh, continuing to support the community aspect, and I think that's where you guys are obviously invested, uh, Stokes County as a whole, the community aspect, so, um, those facilities are very much used and appreciated and, uh, needed and invested in, yeah.
Okay, Mr. Duncan?
I'll say, you know, as part of the, um, the education piece, just like Cheryl was mentioning, you know, you think about, I know firsthand from, um, some, some folks in our church, you know, that because of limitations in class offerings, because of, you know, you've got a teacher spread out over a couple of schools, and, and they have to, you know, have to combo classes and all those things, so it's not, yes, it's money, and at the end of the day, a lot of times, that's what decisions are based on, but at the flip side, we want to make sure, as Mike's alluded to many times, it's the quality of education, you know, and so, uh, kids shouldn't at, at times have to, I know our, our, our band programs are, are struggling, you know, with attendance, you know, I mean, that's, that's obvious when you have to combine north and, and south to make a band to walk down the parade, you know, um, so we need to look at ways that we can, and, and make sure these opportunities are available to the northern side, southern side, you know, regardless, so, um, but I do think that if there is consolidation and schools do close, the communities, one thing I, I looked at and wanted to cove is specifically, there's not a, um, a meeting place for that community, you know, that'd be, uh, if one of the schools in that area definitely could be, um, utilized, um, I know it mentioned, I guess it was one or two elections ago, about a quarter cent, uh, tax increase, or, uh, sales tax.
Sales tax, yeah.
Um, you know, our, our county's blessed to have one of the largest state parks, y'all know that, in the state, million people, and I don't know what the estimates, and I'm sure y'all could tell what the, the income from that, you know, we have a lot of visitors, they come to our county, but they spend very little of their money because, you know, and, and we could, we need to make sure we, we look at that, I'm sure that had to be on the, the ballot, is this four cent, is that a ballot option, or is that a?
No, that's just a straight property tax addition. You do have to vote on four cents.
As a, as a county?
Yeah, you'd have to have a referendum on it, yeah. You have to sell it, or they won't approve it, we've proved that twice already, so.
The four cents, yeah, I, I think it failed last time, and I, I mean, I think that if we, like you said, sell it, that folks are coming to our county regardless, let's make sure that, you know, they're, they're spending their money and that we can recoup on, on their visit, um, because it's gonna impact our students. Um, I'm from this county, and, and I'm thankful that I went through Stokes County schools, um, had an awesome experience, um, I want to make sure that my son and, and we'll see what happens in many years, if he has a kid, that he has an opportunity, but, you know, we've, we've got to make sure that we're teaming up with, you know, as part of that four cent, I want it all to go to Stokes County schools, you know, if, if we do something like that, and, um.
If the four cents does, and, and it would have to.
Yes.
To get people to like it or whatever, agree to it.
Right. But, that's just, I mean, that's my, my perspective as far as the tourism, and, I mean, this is a, it's a, it's a county issue, but the schools are seeing it, you know, on a, on a closer scale, I think, now than maybe some, uh, some other folks, you know, one thing, and I mentioned this, um, when we did the, um, community visits with the hospital, you know, I've seen every community had different needs, um, it's the same way with, with schools, um, and so we want to make sure that they're addressed and they're, and Cheryl's, Cheryl's right, um, I don't know, how many in the community, they'll come up, we don't want one high school, you know, I don't think any board member has said one high school, but because of somebody's perception or whatever, rumors get started, and so, I agree that we need to make sure that the public's knowing that, what our intents are, you know, and, and until we get these studies back, I mean, there's no finalized plans, and I think we need to make sure that the public knows that, I mean, until we get these, these plans, until we get the, the data that, you know, and the thing about it is, I don't want people to think, well, you're trying to make the data say what you want, the data is what it is, you know, I mean, population is this, the attendance is this, you know, the condition of the school, you look through those lists, again, with the, the things that you can't see, you know, and, and that's the thing is, that's, that's data that can support a, a plan, not that we have a plan, now let's make the data support that, and I want to make sure the public knows that, that's not the intent of what we're doing as a board.
Quarter cent sales tax is interesting, cost, and maybe the way to get that approved is to dedicate it to school construction and so forth.
Yeah, I would like, I would like to see that, uh, we've had that discussion already that, uh, if we could have that quarter cent sales tax back on the ballot and, and designate it just as capital funding for the schools, uh, I think maybe it would have a little bit better chance of passing.
No, originally, we looked at security, I mean, and people say, I don't want you to raise my taxes, but if they understand, I can either vote for a quarter cent sales tax or a two, two cent property tax, maybe that's, you know, that's either the either.
You gotta get that message across.
Either, or.
What it does, that relieves.
Property owners from having to pay.
I don't think that wasn't so.
Understood.
It got, we did better the second time than the first time, and it, it, it all revolves around having the right message and marketing it properly, and I, then people will support that thing.
Mr. Morris, you mentioned the bond referendum.
Mm-hmm.
I'll just put it right out there, if it's what's best for the kids, I'm for it, if that's what it takes, whatever it takes, what's best for the kids, that's what we're about.
I think there, you're gonna, you're gonna have to convince the grandparents to vote. That's, that's where, I'm all for it too, but. Bonds are great, as long as they pass for what you're using for. You're not, you're back to square one.
Same, you know, put it out there, that's what it takes for our kids, but we gotta do what's best for them.
But the quarter cent sales tax, the bond referendums, that's two years out, right? I mean, before we could get it on a ballot, I mean.
Probably, yeah.
So.
2024 ballot, it'd be only, it's like, 24, it's a year and a half.
The quarter, the quarter cent failed at a, a primary, I mean, you could put it on a primary earlier, but if you went to a general, you'd have to wait longer.
Yeah.
It did fail at the last, at the primary when it went on, so.
But until that vote, that's what I'm getting at, is that we're still, we're still at there for 5, 500 kids and 19 schools and.
Raised it.
Money that, you know, is not gonna go like it needs to go, so that's, you know.
Well, you all meet collectively, again, usually like mid-June for budget meetings, or at least a budget meeting, and I don't know if there's anything between now and then, if you get, starting to get some data back, things like that, if you want to expand that meeting a little bit beyond just budget discussion, if there's time to, if we can talk a little bit between now and then on what you'd like to, anything you'd like to see from our side or your side to kind of be prepared for a, a good productive meeting when you meet in June, might be helpful too.
Yeah, and we may can share information back and forth without actually having a sit-down meeting.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'd be interested to come to that study.
Yeah, well, I, I would like for all of you, if you could, to come to that, uh, Masonboro, uh, presentation, I think it'll be really, really good and, uh.
Definitely.
Very, uh, interesting.
You know the date, okay, did you say you're not?
We don't have a date yet, we're still working on that.
Okay.
We should know though fairly quickly, right?
They're, they're still working on it to kind of project when they think they will be done, so then we can plan a date, but they're still working on it right now. be done, so then we can plan a date, but they're still working on it right now, and I believe they're watching the meeting today.
That's right.
They're right.
Does anybody else have any comments or questions, or are we ready to adjourn here?
I guess, I think, uh, I think we've said our piece, and, um, again, thank y'all for having us and, and allowing us time to come in and sit down and, and express our opinions with you and talk about our schools, and, and we look forward to working on this issue as we go forward.
Thank y'all for coming, we appreciate it.
Make a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Morris, make a motion on behalf of the county commissioners, that we adjourn.
A second. All of them say aye?
Aye.
Do you need a adjourn?
Yeah, I do, is, uh, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, move.
I have a second, hold in favor, aye, we're adjourned.